Good morning and welcome to the June 8th, 2022 City Council Meeting. We're going to begin with the invocation from Councilman Westbrook, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand with me.
You'll bow your heads with me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today with grateful hearts. We're grateful for the city in which we live. We're grateful for our city team that serves our citizens. We're grateful for our first responders as they keep us safe. But we're most grateful for you and your love for us, Heavenly Father. And so now we ask for your divine guidance to give us the courage to do your will and the strength to see it through as we leave this city. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from May the 11th, 2022.
Move to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Come on up Darren, let's give them just a second to iron that out. We good back there? Okay, here we go. Darren M. 1.
Good morning, Darren Genning, City Engineer here for Gen 1. We are requesting City Council to consider approving payment of $64,000 to UT Tyler. We worked with them and Reynolds &amp; K to alleviate some issues we found on Varsey Drive and then on Patriot Drive. Part of it was the, we went in there looking for some, noticed some issues in there, worked with UT Tyler on that. In fact, you'll notice that they contracted with CRC Landscape to do the construction and we just agreed to help pay for some of it because some of it did undermine some of the sidewalk and some of the inlet pipes underneath Varsey and Patriot.
Any questions for Darren?
No. Move to approve M. 1. Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks Darren. Oh, you're still up.
He's not still up.
M. 2.
All right, this we, one of our city staff was driving by on Border Avenue around 2110 and noticed just something didn't look right and got in there and you'll, we do have a presentation on this one. I can show you some pictures. You do have several pictures, a few pictures inside your inside your packet, but I just want to kind of show you. Basically what we have here, we had some, an inlet box, it is a brick inlet box that has been deteriorating upstream and is completely failing downstream of the, on, excuse me, on the border. So, we have several culverts with the erosion control. You can see some pictures here inside the, the picture on the left is inside the inlet box that is settled. You'll see it's really, it's flowing toward one part of the pipe below it or downstream of it is settling. Let me try this. Can't really see it. Can't really see my pointer. But what you'll see, we're going to replace that inlet box. It is settled, it is broken up and we are replacing that head wall right there and resetting the pipes and lining the pipes. That's why we, we took bids on buy board. We don't, we don't have to take bids more than one because it is a buy board, but we went ahead and solicited and received two bids on there. Solicited for three and received two bids for that. So, we're going to replace all that just because we don't want to see any undermining of the street that's getting close to that. So we recommend, we recommend going to scope beam, structure repair to prevent failure. Replace the wing wall, replace both, protect both upstream and downstream structures.
Any questions for Darren or comments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M. 3, while we are all here today.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This morning, really what I'm here to present is a request that the City Council approve a change order in the amount of a little over a million five for the historic Mayfair. So I'm going to get into a little bit about when we got the pricing back on the structure. We did look at how are we able to cover these funds. Our Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund is what is working to fund these projects. It is the hot tax that is the heads and beds tax that also can only be used on tourism types of projects. So in looking at that and the help we have, it has been performing better than we had forecasted. And so with this change order, we feel like we can cover that through the fund balance and the hot tax. The other thing is that when we were looking at moving forward with this project, one of the things that we wanted to determine is restoration versus new construction. As we all know, new construction numbers and restoration numbers really are all over the place right now with pricing. So we looked at what is the current pricing that we would see from WRL to move forward with the restoration? And that was $346 a square foot. In just talking to WRL Fitzpatrick this week on new construction projects that are coming in, the price is changing almost daily, but in the bids that they've been receiving, they're somewhere around $430 to $450 a square foot. So this would be, restoration would be a cheaper price for us. The other thing is that we are able to save a little bit of money by starting the project after the fair. So the Mayfair in that area has always been a part of the fair setup and so we would continue to honor that by having the structure not underway until after the fair. The timeline on the construction for the restoration would be about nine months. So it would be lagging a little bit behind the grand opening for the actual convention center. There are grant opportunities out there, not a lot in Texas, but Texas Historical Commission is really one of the bigger organizations that does provide grants. Those are in process. That's something that we can certainly, and Amber is working with the Historical Commission on moving forward to try to apply for those grants. There's also some other foundations that we can be looking at between now and October. Moody Foundation is a big supporter in music and historic dance halls in Texas. They've done a lot of work in Austin with their new facilities, state of the art facilities. So there are opportunities for us to continue to pursue donors for this project. But the pricing is only valid for the 30-day period and with construction pricing, that price will probably continue to go up. Very quickly, you are seated in your packet. What is, you know, what can we do in terms of seating and tables and chairs? Around 400 can assemble that seated only and around 280 with round tables and chairs for dinner or lunch. But it can also be utilized as a breakout space in connection with the Rose Conference Center. There are some big milestones that happened with this project, so I just wanted to go back through that. In November of 2019, we did a press conference at the Rose Garden and announced that the city would be moving forward with Phase 1 of the Conference Center Master Plan. That included the Mayfair. That was the press release that we had done and all came together. And then, of course, COVID happened and this project was put on hold for a bit. So we decided and approved in April of 2021, the City Council wanted to move forward. And so that's when we approved Phase 1, which is the construction contract we have with WRL. As part of that, the Mayfair was in that project, but we had to utilize pricing that was from 2014. The reason was we had not had a structural engineer in the property because it was under the ownership of the fair. So at that point, when we took over the ownership, we had a new structural engineer go in and do some new pricing for us. And that's where we have this gap at this point. But how did we really get here and how did we include the Mayfair in the project to begin with? So in 2016, we started a master planning process. It was a very large effort. It lasted for almost a year. It was not until July 2017 that we actually approved the master plan. So like I said, almost a year later. We worked with the steering committee that was led by Kevin Eltyf at the time. There were a lot of different stakeholders who represented a membership on that board. We went through a number of different design charrettes for a two-day period and invited the public to that. We held over 40 stakeholder interviews with multiple stakeholders throughout the community. And most of what we heard from our community was that we want to protect the history and the culture of this area. We were in the middle of also applying for the National Register for the Rose Garden itself. So the bookend was we've got this national historic presence. Only nine gardens in the U.S. have been approved for a national registry listing. And then you had the Mayfair on the other side, which was also a historically significant property. And so the other thing is to continue to look at what is the wow factor that brings people to our community and brings people to this location. And so, excuse me, as we went through the project, we developed project goals and statements based on what we heard. We continuously heard that the Mayfair has been a part of true music history in our community and it's been a part of true music history as a stop on many famous musicians' tours throughout Texas over time. The complex is an entertainment district. It hasn't necessarily been functioning that way because it doesn't provide entertainment for all different types of venues. You come, you may go to a game, you don't have a place to grab something to eat. You come, you may go to a conference. You have to drive somewhere else for your entertainment. The other thing that we heard significant about the area was that it needed to be a destination for not only the city, the region and the state, but to include, as I mentioned before, these outdoor venues that are, it sets us apart from other conference centers and other cultural attractions in the state. Additionally, we came up with nine different designs. Some of those included the Mayfair not being in the design and some did. Once we presented all of those, we narrowed them down to three with the group that was the steering committee. Those three designs then moved forward to the, back to the public to ask for their opinions and views. This was the, number three was the one that we selected, which included this cultural zone and keeping the Mayfair. And as we moved forward, it went through the Parks Board and then to the City Council for approval. And that's really the story of how we ended up with the Mayfair as part of this project overall. I'm going to go through well quickly some designs as we started hitting, okay, we're going from master plan to construction. How do we lay all this out to make sure that it's connected as a campus environment? And that we're still bringing opportunity for these different types of venues to be located on the site. And so this is an overall view, obviously it didn't turn out very clear, so let me just click through. But what we wanted to point out is that we have the conference center located next to the conference center. Is a tree grove that was planned to be adjacent to this food truck park that's also planned. This is a couple of shots that I'm going to show you. So you see the Mayfair in the background. The armory would be a building we are proposing to save also for the outdoor pavilion. And then that's adjacent to the food truck park. So you create this indoor/outdoor space with the Mayfair. We've also planned on large garage doors on the side of the Mayfair. So you open that up to an area that creates an outdoor space between the covered pavilion and the food truck park. So you can use all of these spaces together and activate the entire area or you can use these separately depending on what type of events you have going on. So it definitely creates that cultural attraction and outdoor space for not only tourists, but also, you know, something that our citizens in Tyler can use. And then this is just a shot looking back from the conference center and then finally looking to the conference center where the tree grove was planned. Phase 1 only includes the Mayfair. It doesn't include the food truck park. But I thought it would be important for you all to see how this lays out. How did we think about what would, what would be these connections as we're planning the construction? Additionally, you know, we talked a little bit about the process, the planning process and why this matters. But when we're marketing this complex, and I know Visit Tyler and Sherri Lee and I have talked and I know she was going to try to be here this morning. But this is, the things that are in this facility that we are planning, including the Mayfair, really set us apart from other destinations. It's why you want to plan your conference or why you want to come to Tyler because there is a piece of history that is a part of this. It's not just a homogenous convention center that we've sat down in, say, the middle of a retail center. The other thing that it provides flexibility, you can have different breakouts in not only the Rose Garden, not only the new convention center, but even the Mayfair to be included in the packaging for the different properties that you can utilize. The other thing is that, you know, it's some of the country's most famous entertainers that have been in this building. And to say that this is where you're having your breakout for your conference or where we're having a concert or where the community is renting for their daughter to get married, it provides just a lot of opportunity from a marketing perspective to do something somewhere different and that separates us, as I mentioned before. We know the value of historic preservation in this community. Our community has fought for historic preservation over the years. It's why we have the National Historic Districts, Azelia District, Bricksteep Street District. We have the Azelia Trail every year where people come in, tourism from out of town. We have the Rose Festival every year where people visit at the Rose Garden. It is part of our heritage. It is a big part of what THC, which the Texas Historical Commission and our heritage groups say that brings in tourism because it's different and unique to your culture. So I wanted to just mention why and how we would market this because it is going to be extremely different than what you see when you visit other communities. I have the slide up here of the information we gave you on the history of the Mayfair, but I want to be respectful. I know there are a lot of people here to speak and answer questions later. But the Smith County Historical Society, you know, folks from Tyler Historic have taken the time to come and speak today. So that's really all I have for the presentation unless you have immediate questions.
Any questions for Stephanie before we start pulling up speakers?
Stephanie, do we have any idea what we will charge to rent the venues? We're making, the city's going to make an investment in this if this motion passes, but it's a revenue producer for us. So do we have an idea of cost or rental cost?
We did approve initial fee for this a couple of council meetings ago when we did the fee structure for the whole complex. One day rental is $1,500 for the Mayfair. That's the full facility. So we did estimate that very, very conservatively because we've not owned this facility. It's not been something that we've been able to market. It would be utilized about 1.5 times a week. That's very, very conservative. We think it would probably be used Thursday, Friday, Saturday for the weekend. That brings in about $150,000, $145,000 a year. One of the things that we mentioned when we did the fee schedule is that our tourism facilities, we are recouping in our, I would say, pricing about 60% with the new fees. So we are not covering all of the convention center operation costs. And that's really because in our discussions, we recognize that that brings tourism and additional economic dollars to the community that's above and beyond paying for the operating costs. I think this facility could be, of course, that fee could be addressed and compared to to other dance halls and other historical sites. When we get into it, we can always change that fee and recognize that how it will be utilized. Will it mostly be utilized with the convention center? Will we have groups that want to bring musicians in? So I think there's a number of different ways that we can structure the fee schedule as we move forward.
Stephanie, have you looked at any other cities that have a similar type of structure? Square footage wise, next to a convention center or just in general to see what they're bringing in revenue wise?
We have been doing some research. A lot of the facilities that are, let's take for example, we've probably, a lot of us have been in Green Hall. A lot of those are privatized facilities. That's also something that we need to look at. So they bring in and pay for the talent that they bring in and then they also make money on the tickets that they sell. So it's, this is a unique property in that it is next to our convention center. That's not something that is really out there. So it was difficult to compare apples to apples. Most of the dance halls you see don't stand next to a convention center. We're fortunate that it's a part of the bigger cultural attraction than just a standalone dance hall.
Stephanie, for people that want to rent the hall, how will they get food into the hall or will there be a kitchen of some sort to prepare food or at least prepare it to be served?
So there's a, there is a small kitchen in the facility. The kitchen, the catering kitchen that we have in the adjacent property is closed. You know, there's a back door that goes, you just have to cross the street. You have the option of bringing in food trucks and you have the option of bringing in a catering truck. You could prep in that and then pull into the facility. And there are, I didn't mention, but there are new restroom facilities and new storage areas. So there's a couple of rooms that actually can be utilized for setup as well that were the old restrooms.
Any other questions for Stephanie? All right. First on the list is Ashley Washman. Ashley? If you can just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Ashley Washman. I dress as 1204 South Towneville Avenue. I'm the Executive Director for Historic Tyler. And we have a longstanding history of working with the city of Tyler for preservation efforts. And we specifically have a history with preservation with the Mayfair. In 2016, Historic Tyler funded a significant grant that established the Friends of the Mayfair. I'm sure that you are all familiar with that organization. It's a 501(c)(3) with a mission to save the Mayfair. It's listed on the city website as a preservation partner. There were several fundraising efforts and PR efforts in conjunction with that organization. You see these T-shirts and posters. There's a large sector of our community that is really passionate about saving the Mayfair. And I'm sure that all of you are familiar with the history of the Mayfair. But just in case you're not, I've printed out some history for you guys. For a building to be considered historic, there's three criteria that it must meet. It has to be 50 years or older. It has to retain physical physical characteristics from the time period of significance. And then it has to prove that it's significant, whether that's in association with a notable event or a person. Tyler has many historic buildings, but I would argue that the Mayfair is one of the most significant in that the history associated with this property transcends local significance and state significance. You know, we had national music icons traveling to a small East Texas town to perform here and that's really important. As an organization, Historic Tyler often says that each individual house or building contributes to the historical integrity of the town. And I would say that the demolition of the Mayfair would not just whittle away at the historical integrity, but significantly impacted. You know, and on the flip side, it's also true, the preservation of the Mayfair building would be a notable accomplishment and a feather in the cap of the city. You know, for over 40 years, Historic Tyler has worked with the city in designating, you know, the National Historic Districts. And as recently as this year, the city has prioritized getting downtown on the National Register. And so I think it'd be counterproductive to stop the Mayfair project now and not see it to completion. You know, why is preservation important? Without historic preservation, we might as well be a Frisco or a Longview, no offense. But we all know that Tyler is really special and I think that the character, the charm and the culture that defines Tyler is tied to the historic preservation. I did a quick dive into heritage tourism and it's a really, it's a viable option for the Mayfair. Just to list a few organizations that really highlight this. The Texas Heritage Living, Texas Dance Hall Preservation, that's a 501(c)(3) specifically for Texas dance halls. The Texas Historical Commission, Travel Texas, and even the National Trust for Historic Preservation have either written articles, organized tours, or promoted the tourism of dance halls specifically in Texas. You know, you can think of Santa Herman Hall in Austin, Green Hall, the Ballroom in Martha. There's a long list. Get closer.
Yes.
Sorry. And so in my research with the heritage tourism, I didn't find anything, any article that promoted tourism or visiting newly constructed music venues. It just sterilizes the communities. There's not that nostalgia. There's not that pull for people to come and visit that venue. I think the possibilities with the renovated Mayfair are exciting. And I think that it just continues and fortifies all the efforts for all the years that we've done for historic preservation in Tyler. And I have my contact information on the sheet that I gave you guys. If you would like links to the organizations I just spouted out or clarification on anything, I'm happy to answer your question.
Any questions for Ashley?
Thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you.
You have extras who may want to share them with the audience.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ashley. All right, next we have Larry Wade. Good morning, Mr. Wade. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Larry Wade. You're on my physical uphill box.
Physical.
Physical, 200 South Vinewood, going to Tyler, Texas, 7x702. And that is a historical building too. I'm glad to be here, Mayor, and to all the council. I'm always glad to see my former student. I taught him history, George Fead. Glad to see him there. Dr. McKeller served on our Board of the National Tyler Smith County African American Stock Society that I founded 15 years ago. I'm a proud member of Smith County Stock Society and Board. I've been on the society for over 20 years and on the Board for several years. I'm a member of Oakwood Historical Committee. I'm on the Tyler Morning Telegram Ambassador Board. I've grown up in Tyler. And when you grow up in a city like Tyler and have lived there all your life, there are certain places that stand out. The Mayfair Building is a place that has been significant not only for me, but for the entire city of people who have been citizens here. I have attended events there, religious events, cultural events. I remember some wrestling matches. I remember, y'all probably remember the Bunnericks, Thunderbolt Patterson, others, just to name a few. But the historical significance of the Mayfair Building is something that I think we should consider restoring it. This is what makes Tyler, I think, a better place to live is that we are building new things. We are growing. We're growing fast, but we also are preserving the old. And I think we regret some places that we have torn down. And so I'd like to see the Mayfair Building restored and continue to be one of the great places that we can be proud of here in Tyler, Texas.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wade. Any questions for Mr. Wade or comments?
What kind of students, brother?
Larry sent him to the corner.
He was one of my most outstanding students. Talking of getting off topic.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Okay, next we have Jimmy Horton. Come on, Jimmy. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jimmy Horton, 2909 South Robinson. It's in almost downtown Tyler now. It's out in the country when the house was built. That's another historical situation. Back in about 2015, maybe 2014, there was a notice in the paper that the fair manager was wanting to tear down the Mayfair Building. And Ronnie Anderson and I formed that day, Save the Mayfair, or Friends of the Mayfair. There's so much historical things that have happened in that. As Larry mentioned, I was supposed to say wrestling, but to me it was wrestling. The Golden Gloves was played there. I think a couple of the Rose Queen's carnations were held there. The Golden Gloves was played there. I think a couple of the Rose Queens carnations were held there. Neat things about the structure and everything. The wooden floor in the Mayfair Building is pecan. And the way it got done was, they were building a complex up in North Tyler and it was in a pecan grove. And they salvaged the wood out of those pecan trees. And it's hard to find replacement wood for the pecan wood that's in it. As was mentioned, there's a lot of religious groups that came through there. They were country western. Johnny Horton, I kind of tend to lean toward him a little bit, was there. Just the Who's Who's of East Texas. And then the big boys started coming in. In 1954, 55, Elvis was here three times. First time was in February. Nobody knew who he was. Second time he came back in May, the crowd was pretty good. The third time he came back in October or November, they had to have guards at the doors and everything because people were just crowding to get in there. We have a picture of him sitting on the table in the dressing room. And Tom Perryman, several, a couple of years before he passed away, brought a group of people from Germany through there. There were 31 German people came through there. And once they got in that dressing room and saw that table that Elvis was sitting on, they had to sit on that table to get a picture taken. And next year, there was 11 more came in from Germany. So it's a wide range of things that were going. I get excited about it, but there's a lot to be said about saving that building because it was the first county-city-owned building outside of downtown Tyler. It was originally built probably somewhere about 1919, somewhere in that period of time. And it was built as a, oh shoot, senior moment here. We're going back, but it's built, built and built and built from there. I'll jump up and say what it was here in a minute, okay? But anyhow.
I knew, I knew I should have put you on a timer. Keep going, keep going.
It says three minutes right there.
I may need to start that here in a second.
I talked to several, several people that had things done and stuff like that. And Ed Moore, who did the walk-through-the-cut, and I really enjoyed that. I got to know him. He and I kind of, we graduated in 65 from a Tyler school. We worked at Kelly Springfield, et cetera. But we got to know each other real well and he had outstanding stories to tell about what happened there as well. Let's save the Mayfair Building. Friends of the Mayfair Building, okay? Thank you all.
Thank you, Jimmy. All right, next up is William Kroom. Morning, Mr. Kroom.
Morning. William Kroom. I live at 6902 Glen Eagles. I just want to say, give a few personal thoughts about the Mayfair. It's not just a brick and mortar building. As Ashley said, there's a lot of passion involved. Also, there's a lot of good memories. My mom and twin sister grew up in Flint. In World War II, they lived on Donnybrook. Mom actually ran for Miss Tyler in 1944, sponsored by Nickel Studio on the square. So they always loved Tyler. As a kid, I came here all the time. I actually was born and raised in Dallas. But they always, my mom and dad always talked about it. And it was always great memories about the Mayfair Building. Mom and twin sister, they were volunteer for the USO inside the Mayfair. They would be called Donut Dollys. When buses came in from Camp Fanning, they would be there giving the soldiers and officers coffee and donuts. Mom also, and her twin sister Polly, who ended up staying in Tyler, she lived at Belmont Ave all her life, they were great jitterbuggers. And they were the dine and dance thing. Well, anyway, Dad came from Fort Benning, Georgia as a second lieutenant. Dad came to the Mayfair with the other officers. While in officer candidate school, one thing that they did was learn how to waltz. Well, Mom and Dad met each other and they started dating. The bad part was Dad could waltz, Mom couldn't. Mom could jitterbug, but Dad couldn't. Some way they made it work, anyway. But I just wanted to tell you, born and raised in City of Dallas, I applaud the reservation, the restoration efforts of the city of Tyler. That's one reason I love this city. I got here as quickly as I could. I grew up and worked, I worked for the city of Dallas. I know how some of these historic buildings were torn down in the middle of the night. The city of Dallas just threw up their hands and said, "Oh, oh, we don't know what happened." And so I hope, just like this gentleman was talking here, that in the restoration efforts for the Mayfair, it's kept as close to the way it was during World War II in the 50s as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Kroom. All right, next up we have Michael Romines. Three minutes.
Michael Romines, 803 Tallyhoe, Tyler, Texas, 7 by 703.
Time is up.
To be honest. Funny, that's what everyone's saying about your position. To be honest, you're so light and you're so, just so friendly. I won't take up a lot of time. Actually, I am the current president of Historic Tyler. And, you know, I echo much of what's already been said. You know, the Mayfair is, in the most simple terms, is a significant part of our city. And when we take a lot of emotions out of things and whole and blue for this or that, and we boil things down to the basic, that's what we kind of have to ask ourselves. And I just think anyone would have a harder time arguing that it is a significant part of the history of our city. And to, you know, listen, I appreciate the work y'all do in trying to think long-term and how we can better our city. You know, but sometimes looking forward requires us to look backwards. And so, and so, you know, that's simply what I would just keep it short and simple is that there is, it is hard to dispute the historical piece that the Mayfair holds within our city. And to make dramatic changes to it would ultimately be another Smith County courthouse. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romines.
It was an opera house.
All right, next we have Edwin Holt. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm Edwin Holt. I live at 1613 South College. So, is that all you need from me?
Keep on going.
When I came to Tyler 12 years ago, this was a sleepy little town.
You got to speak in the microphone. People on Facebook Live aren't going to be able to hear you.
I'm pretty loud, don't worry. There wasn't a whole lot going on, but as you folks know, that has changed. There's restoration going all over the place. There's restoration downtown. It is an exciting place to be. And I was asked, would the Mayfair Building be utilized? You know, these guys want to know about the money. They want to know if this makes sense from an investment standpoint. And the answer to that is yes. I produce, I'm kind of nervous, so if you'll excuse me. I'm not a very good speaker. I can sing really well, but speaking is not my thing. The answer to that is yes, it would be utilized. I produce events here in town. And what we have are big venues and we have small venues. We don't have a mid-sized venue. And that is what we need, really. You know, the convention center is going to be great, but it's going to be big. I produce an event called the Juneteenth Gospel Bridge. And because we don't have a mid-sized venue, I had to use a wedding venue. We really do need this and it would be, it would be a great investment by the city. So with that said, I wrote just a small piece because the Mayfair Building is not just a building. It is not just another venue, as you guys know. So if you'll bear with me, I'll read through this, if you don't mind. "How hollow it must be to live in a world without song. Whether that song be the notes skillfully executed on an instrument or the simple sounds of nature itself performing in concert on a simple stroll in our very own rose garden. Music represents so much of who we are. The different chapters we have all lived through, from high school dances to an all-out rock concert we may have attended as a young person. Music is, as our good friend Dick Clark put it, the soundtrack of our lives. Tyler, Texas, has had many chapters. And with any story, the pages of a great novel are filled with victories and defeats. And through it all, our little city has continued to always serve and support the arts, music being at the forefront of that support. The Mayfair Building, constructed in 1927, is an icon and one of the most important chapters in this book we call Tyler. From the dances held every Saturday night with Raymond Roan and his orchestra to the very beginnings of rock and roll featuring a young Elvis Presley or a very young man in black howling his fulsome prison blues. The Mayfair has cradled the memories of these wonderful artists and stood firm as their foundation of song for 95 years. Some folks will argue that history isn't important. We have all watched our own nation attempt to erase the bad things within our past, but what we don't take into consideration is the positive that can come from all things, good and bad. It is the way God has worked through man since the very beginning, continuing to push us to good throughout all of our self-proclaimed achievements as well as our mistakes made throughout our existence on this earth. As a city and a nation, we must hold on to and preserve our history. It is who we were and will always be a part of who we are. The Mayfair represents everything that is good about the human condition and is a part of who we are. It is a part of our Tyler and deserves the restoration it so badly needs. I'll leave you with one of my all-time favorite quotes from the philosopher himself, Mr. Bob Dylan. "Take care of all your memories, for you cannot relive them."
Thank you, Edwin. All right, next up we have Jaclyn Parton. Do you wish to speak? Okay. Okay, we're glad you're here. We're glad you're here. Kristen Cruz. Morning, Ms. Cruz. Name and address for the record, please.
Kristen Cruz, 11749 Highway 64 East. Good morning, Mayor, council members. Thank you for your time this morning. I'm here today in support of the rehabilitation of the historic Mayfair Building. As both a resident of the city of Tyler and an outside consultant on the Tyler Arts and Culture Collective project, working with Sherry and Visit Tyler, I see substantial benefit to this venue and this community. As a resident who calls Tyler home, I'm extremely proud of the historical structures and culture that surrounds our oldest venues, as I'm sure many of our residents are, a lot of those here today. The Mayfair Building, being one of those historic venues, provides an opportunity to enhance another part of our community culturally, not only for locals, but visitors and conference attendees being adjacent to the Rose Complex. It also supports a growing heritage tourism movement that not only creates jobs and business opportunities for the city, but often improves the quality of life for our locals. As a consultant and partner with Visit Tyler on the Tyler Arts and Culture Collective project, I feel a strong need here to preserve another piece of Tyler's rich history. I've been in the tourism industry for more than 20 years, working with cities of all sizes. Many of those cities with a deep cultural community see a very high percentage of visitors participate in cultural and heritage travel. Those that do stay longer, they spend more money, and they travel more often. This building, when restored, can be a very valuable asset to this community for those reasons. I also believe that new development can be great for certain cities or metro areas, but revitalizing old development in an effort to boost the economy, spread historical wisdom, and beautify an area can be even greater for the city of Tyler. Historic in today's world no longer means old and not worth the trouble. Today, old buildings are reminders of the city's culture and complexity. Tyler needs this building's restoration to maintain a sense of permanency and heritage for our longstanding locals, new residents such as myself, future visitors, and meeting professionals. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're down to the last two, if y'all are getting curious. Claudia Carroll.
My name is Claudia Carroll. I live in the Hog House, 2623 South Chilton Avenue, Tyler. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse. There's been wonderful comments here. For me, I'm a real estate broker. I deal with people coming, moving to our wonderful city. And our forefathers have done a great job with this city in their forward thinking of saving the history. Dallas didn't do that. Tyler has. I can't tell you how many people I have been driving around in my car and they're so in wonder of the homes we've saved, the old buildings we've saved. It's part of our cultural heritage and the people that are investing their futures in our city are in amazement that we have done that. Yes, I think our city manager needs to be able to make decisions on things concerning the construction or the rehabilitation of the Mayfair. We just want to make sure one of those decisions is not the demolition of the building. We want it saved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. And with our last speaker will be Sherry Lee.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Sherry Lee. I live at 154 Gaddy Road, 3115 in Jacksonville. Again, my name is Sherry Lee. I serve as president of Visit Tyler. And thank you all for letting me speak today. I'd like to speak on behalf of restoring the Mayfair Building and keeping this unique story in a building alive. Visit Tyler serves as a destination marketing organization for the city of Tyler. It's our job to offer an exceptional guest experience. It is our, even in our value statement, in our value statement, we say, "We create rosy experiences." And this is definitely one of those. The building is part of the story that we tell that sets us apart from other destinations. This building is particularly important to me because it offers meeting space that completes the whole Rose Complex experience. Not only is the square footage critical to offering to meeting planners, but it also offers that one-of-a-kind, you can't find it anywhere else, experience. Building the convention center environment that offers the chance for attendees to come see our history is exactly what convention goers are looking for today. Think about your own travel experience. When you go somewhere, you are looking for that history, that unique spot, that thing that you can do there that will bring memories that you can't get anywhere else. That's what convention goers are looking for today. So I am pleading that we do what is necessary to restore this building so that we have the advantage over other cities that we are competing with. I think it's really critical to our success. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherry. All right, that concludes our speakers. Unless I forgot somebody. Good. I guess it's time for... Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. First, I want to thank all of those citizens that came out to the support of the Mayfair Building. I too support the Mayfair Building. It's historical to the African-American community. I remember growing up when the only building in Tyler, Texas, that African-Americans could use was the Mayfair Building. And I appreciate your story because you talked about the Pecan Floor that came from the historical North Tyler, my district. So thank you very much. I learned something today that I did not know about the floor. Thank you. Thank you.
Also, all the speakers did a great job. I also, unlike Councilman McKeller, I support the project. I also support the fact that the proposal is to pay for it out of hotel occupancy tax. So that means that people that are coming to our community to visit the Mayfair, to visit the new Rose Complex, are actually going to be the people that pay for the restoration of the Mayfair. I love that funding mechanism. You know, WRL has put together this bid. It's good for 30 days. I believe our 30 days is up this week, and so if we don't move rapidly, we lose that locked-in bid, and we'll have to start over, which could be considerably higher. So I like the project, I like where we're headed, and I like all the comments about history, so just open it up for discussion.
Well, I'll start. My thing is, growing up as a kid, I used to hear, I used to listen to KZY, and I used to listen to Matt Walker, and he would always talk about events held at the Mayfair Building. The only thing I hate is, I was a kid. Am I the youngest one up here? I don't know. But all I'm saying is, I never got the opportunity to go to the Mayfair Building and dance on those floors or whatever, and so I really hope we preserve it so I can go in there and dance on this pecan floor that y'all keep talking about. But it's a historic, historic building, and just, they talked about the chitlin' circuit. I don't know what that is, but apparently that's when, you know, I guess you had African-American people come through and just different people that were singing. So I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, how this renovation is going to go, and I'm just excited about it. Plus, it's in my district, so I'm definitely supporting it.
All right, is there comments?
Mr. Mayor, I make a comment, and I'll start by saying, I'm not opposed to the restoration of the building. I appreciate the significance of the historical aspect of the building. My concerns lie more along the lines of, we've had this bid and this proposal for 30 days, and we're just not getting to the questions of, are there grants? What possible grants exist? What's the possible revenue stream? And so I appreciate the historical significance, and again, I'm not opposed to restoration of the building. I wish we had more time to answer some of these questions about what other grant streams are available, what are the revenue projections that we could attribute to this building if it is restored. And so I would like to see us have more time to address some of these questions before making a decision.
All right. Bob? James?
Yeah, I kind of responded to Stuart's comments. Being in the construction business and the climate of the world we live in right now, you're lucky that we got the time we did. WRL was very generous in that, right now in my industry, we're looking at two- to five-day bids, because prices are changing that much. We've got a narrow window, I agree with you, but that price can change significantly if we delay approving this item. But yes, there are avenues out there that we need to investigate to look for. Funding help in this is from the historic side, but I hate, I would hate us to lose a window that we have that we know is firm, and I only think that construction prices are going to continue to go upward, just based on availability of man and materials.
And as a point of clarification, you actually have already approved the fee structure for the revenue generation on this back in May. That was done when you approved the fee structure for the full facility. You actually have approved already the restoration, a rehab of the Mayfair back in April of 2021. This is a change order now that we've been able to get into the facility fully, and Chad Humphries from this Patrick is here, if you want any further questions from him or further details on it. But this is where you're understanding now, really, the full cost of that, upon our ability to get in there and really as far as able to kind of pull back the flooring and some of the walls and be able to see what the real cost is going to be for the rehab piece.
Brad?
Yeah, I wanted to start by saying, like several others have said, that I congratulate all the people that spoke today that came out. We hear a lot of people that come speak for or against certain issues, and I think you folks did the best I've heard of being, you know, speaking for your cause. When we first heard about this, which was not that long ago, we, and I was for sure a bit trepidatious about the amount of money that I heard, because I really didn't, you know, this building's kind of skipped a gap of time that things weren't going on. So I did not have a whole lot of history with the Mayfair, knew what it was, but I didn't have any personal history with it. But I've learned a lot over the last few days, and I, you know, I like the history. I love Tyler, so it means a lot to me, but it's meant a lot, too. You know, Edwin, somebody who's in this business, saying, "No, this is, this is an important space, a very usable space." I think it's a sizable investment, you know, and that's what we're supposed to be looking at up here, that I think we just need to be serious about marketing it, and I think we will be, so I think it's, I think it's a good project.
Any other discussion?
May I make a motion to approve M. 3?
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we got three more agenda items, so either I can say, you got two minutes to split, or you got to sit here for three more items. Okay, I guess we're gonna, okay, we'll give y'all a few minutes to get out of here.
Sorry, whole family.
Sorry, Tiffany.
I make a motion to arrest Mr. Romines as he's walking out the door.
That was funny.
Right back.
He came right back on a bit.
Yeah, I love you too.
All right, Tiffany, it's all yours.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm surprised more people didn't want to stay in here.
I know.
This is exciting. I'm Tiffany Curry with Tyler Water Utilities, and I am presenting two items today that were recently bid, the Consent Decree Remediation Group Four Specialty Projects. The first one, item M. 4, is the pipe bursting package. These are the last two projects in the Group Four packages. We've had five. The specialty manhole rehab, the traditional manhole rehabilitation, the traditional mainline rehabilitation, and today, the specialty mainline pipe bursting and cure-in-place pipe. The first project is the Group Four Specialty Pipe Bursting, which included 74 sanitary sewer gravity main asset locations. This improvement includes remediation by pipe bursting and reconnecting existing services, as well as all of the auxiliary construction activities that go along with that. We received six responsive bidders for this project, and the low bidder was Douglas Daley Construction in the amount of $2,374,732. I do request that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Douglas Daley Construction in the amount of $2,374,732 for the Consent Decree Remediation Group Four Specialty Pipe Bursting Project.
Any questions for Tiffany?
I do, Tiffany. Could you give us a little background on the successful bidder?
Yes, absolutely. Douglas Daley is located in Ferris, Texas, not very far from the DFW area. They have, they were founded in 1986. They have quite a bit of pipe bursting and specialty mainline rehabilitation experience.
Have they done work on this project? Have they done work with us before?
We have not worked with this contractor before.
Are they recommended by one of our consultants?
We, yes, we checked their references. They had good feedback from their references. We couldn't find any, anything negative about them. Good feedback.
Motion. So moved.
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M. 5.
The second item, M. 5, is the Group Four Specialty Mainline Cure-In-Place Pipe. This project includes 36 sanitary sewer gravity main asset locations that will be remediated via CIPP liner. We do have two open-cut segments of large diameter pipe that will be a part of this project as well, and then, of course, they'll be installing and replacing a few manholes and reconnecting any service connections that are required. We had five responsive bidders for this project, with the low bidder being Texas Pride Utilities in the amount of $3,640,612. And I'll comment here on Texas Pride. We have not worked with Texas Pride in the past. We reached out to all of their references. I even spoke with several of our contractors that have worked with them as subconsultants to find out a little bit about them, and the overall consensus is that they do have the ability to do the work, they do have experience within this specialty pipe bursting arena, and they're, they're based out of Houston.
Any questions for Tiffany?
It's nice to have five bidders on both.
It's good.
Move to approve M. 5.
Motion by Curtis, second by McGee and Winn. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tiffany. Now we're down to the consent decrees. Anything need to be pulled, or...
Consent agenda. You said consent decree.
Oh, consent agenda.
Got it on the mind.
I do have it on the mind.
You do, right.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent decree?
Move to approve this.
I do have it on my mind.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, okay. I got a motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Why's everybody laughing out there? All right, now we're down to the city manager's report, if I said that correctly.
Mayor and council, a few items of note. We did receive a gracious donation for the Tyler Police Department this week that will allow for the department to purchase a new Ultra 800 PAG forensic microscope and new 48-station forensic digital charging and secure storage units for the forensic units and new crime scene lab. And if y'all have seen this, probably the construction continuing on the rehab of the crime scene lab adjacent to City Hall and the police department. That is something we're very excited about. So it's new, equivalent enhanced, and streamline the department's forensic evidence processing, and the department can continue to serve its citizens in the highest manner. We also celebrated Fun Forest opened up just this past weekend. We had a great turnout despite a couple of hiccups. There were about 750 to 800 people in attendance over the course of Saturday and Sunday. Our lifeguards and staff are ready to take on the summer and hope to bring this, bring joy to our community. We'll start our regular schedule of Wednesday through Saturday already for this week. And then also we have with Melina and Donna, you've seen us just putting out different information on the Melina and Donna Avenue projects and just kind of the delayed work that we've had on by the contractor on those projects, and those ones where we continue through our communications and our engineering staff to work with the neighbors in those, on those two streets, and also with legal to be able to look to make sure that we are adhering to the contract or adhering the contractor to our contract, and what our next steps are going to be for that, in order to make sure that those streets are taken care of and improved, as was originally scheduled with the half-cent program. And so with that, Mayor, turn it back over to you, sir.
Okay. Any other comments for the city manager before we adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned.